Going to break into magic bus.
Better be careful on what you just said.
I'm ready finally, sorry.
Good evening. The November 18th, 2019 Agenda meeting of the Milltown Borough Council will now come to order. Will the clerk please call the roll?
Council President Dixon?
Here.
Councilman Parkus?
Here.
Councilwoman Kerber?
Present.
Councilman Lagotti?
Here.
Councilwoman Mayor?
Here.
Councilman Revolinsky?
Here.
Mr. Mayor, we have six present.
Thank you. Will the clerk please read the meeting's statement?
Let the minutes reflect that adequate notice of the holding of this regular business meeting of Borough Council was provided by the adoption of a resolution and the posting, filing, and forwarding of a copy of the same official Borough newspapers, Home News Tribune, and Starletre Publishing companies on January 10. Public participation in this meeting will be permitted during public hearings and after the agenda of scheduled matters has been completed.
Thank you. We will dispense with items four and five and go right into items for discussion. Milltown Green Team at the library outreach materials.
Yes, thank you, Mr. Mayor. The Green Team, the council liaison presently, and we are using the displays at the library for the rain barrels and rain gardens. There are programs for residents if they're interested. We will have a sign up sheet as well, so that's in the process of being completed. And we will also work on stormwater management solutions throughout the course of this monthly process because not only do we get sustainable Jersey points, also Ralph gets when he uploads his report, I think it's due in April, for his stormwater, he gets credit for it as well. So as a Green Team, we're trying our best to really get out there and do outreach, and so we will have this information available. If there's interest in rain barrels, we'll get the program together and discuss it with everyone and move forward with it. In terms of rain gardens, what's nice is that, oh, it's right here, sorry. The, of course, this is the municipal designs. The designs will be at no cost to the resident, and then there's a rebate program so that whatever they select, hopefully, of course, native to New Jersey, native to this area, you get a selection if anyone's interested in the rain garden. So we will have sign up sheets in the library and also in the display cases, a little bit of information regarding those. And as we move forward with the stormwater management, the green infrastructure, New Jersey Future, Jersey Water Works, Lawrence Lowererington Watershed, as well as a few other, we will have municipal outreach through the clerk, through the mayor, and I suggest to the council presidents of the, you know, county, so that we get things out there throughout the state. Many more towns are doing these programs for a reason. Flooding is becoming an issue, especially flash flooding, so any help that we could do for our municipalities would be a great help. And going forward, there was a recent report on Lowerereton. It's in dire need to be restored. Lots of lack of trees exist there, a lot of lack of vegetation, and that report was done recently by Rutgers and grad students. Once that becomes available, I can share those links and you can review the reports. They've mapped it out. So there's a big section of Verretton River where they're concentrating in this area to really restore that, and you'll get more updates, you know, beginning next year. And that concludes the display. Oh, I just wanted to say that this is the brochure we'll have. There's also one from rain barrels and more information on the back, so you can review everything at your leisure to see if you want to make a decision to go forward with the project.
Any questions for the councilwoman?
The project is what?
Any project that we get feedback from that's a great number of people. If it's only four or five people, they could do it on their own. However, when it comes to the rain barrels, we have organizations in place that will get volunteers, because I'm not climbing in the barrel if I find a rain barrel. They will do the kit, put it together for any resident, seniors, anyone of any age, if they want to do it at their house. This helps you to water your flowers. You can water your plants at the ground level, and if we get feedback, we'll let you know and we can move forward with it.
So the materials for to sign up for that are at the library?
Public library, correct.
Is it online at all?
Not at the present time.
Can we put that on the website somewhere? Does the Green Team have a?
We have mentioned, I think, have a date, but we haven't got information for the Green Team.
Okay. How many people are on the Green Team?
We have about eight people.
And you meet?
And we have about five people are more active than the other three.
So you meet once a month?
Once a month, mhm.
Okay, item B, Milltown Green Team logo contest.
So since we're meeting more often and really wanting to do outreach in the town for a number of reasons, we want to be able to provide the Green Team with a logo. So we're going to, we have put together a contest. Our next meeting will confirm all the details and get them approved from the committee and then outreach to everybody regarding the contest. We left this to the ninth and 12th grade students, the older group, because we want to make it, you know, Milltown Green Team and maybe if they come up with a logo, to the artist students in the town. So that's what the contest will be. That information will be at the library as well, and then we can, you know, move forward with that as well. And we have like a February 1st deadline date, so it'll be during the winter months that we want to do this and have something out in the spring.
Any questions for the councilwoman? Hearing none. MC, school food waste program update.
Yes, the Middlesex County School Food Waste Program is coming to superintendence later this month, early next month. We had presented it at the August meeting in Milltown District, so I'm hoping that this will be the greatest push for towns to really set up a shared table. That's the first process. There's several other initiatives, but the first one was for the county to push the shared table. I mentioned this before. If a student wants something to drink or eat, it's sealed, you know, food and drink and not expired. That's what's laid out. You can just go help yourself and take it. So hopefully, you know, we'll see that in Milltown as well as several other towns. South Brunswick has it, actually last month, no, early this month, I'm sorry, it's still November. East Brunswick did a outreach with the Environmental Commission, so they're really pushing hard to do this in East Brunswick, North Brunswick, and some of the other surrounding towns. And I think New Brunswick is already initiating theirs, so let's hope we all get on board, something we can do for the students and any kid that's hungry.
Any questions for the councilwoman? Hearing none. Strategic Planning Committee presentation.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. So I wanted to do a quick update. It's been a year since we started the process. We said it would take a couple years, and so we've drilled down and we now have our four pillars that will be strategic drivers. So before the end of the year, I wanted to just give an update, and then going forward, whoever has Finance Administration and planning next year can probably take this over from me, and of course, I'll work closely with them. I know we've had a lot of resident involvement, and we're going to count on that going forward, but I wanted to just present what we've drilled down to get so far, so.
John, will you hit the mouse when she needs it?
Next slide, please.
We hit the mouse. Will you hit the button for the next slide?
Are you on, oh, there's only four slides or five. Okay, so about a year ago, we had the, at the end of 2018, we had the first two meetings where we talked about the borough's strengths, weaknesses, opportunities, and threats. You can refer to the minutes on the Borough website. There is a page, a link for the Strategic Planning Committee. So after that, throughout the winter and spring, we did follow-up discussions that led to the creation of the four strategic drivers for the overall plan. The next steps, which you will see some of the bullets that came up under each pillar, will be to develop benchmark goals for each one, and then we will obtain council approval of those goals and the timelines associated with them. So just for the public to know, yeah, you can go to the next slide, thank you. Vanna, appreciate that. So there were four that came out of that initial discussion, the first one being downtown revitalization, so I'm not going to go through each slide. What you will see is some of the things intersect throughout the different pillars, but, you know, already some of the things have been done, you know, expand the revitalization committee. We've sort of revitalized the revitalization committee and they've been doing a great job. You know, there for a while, it was focused on Milltown Day. Now we've expanded that out and we'll have more opportunity to do so. But these were all things that came from the public as things that they thought would help with downtown revitalization or issues that the borough could put resources towards or to look to long-term how to revitalize the downtown. Which, out of that meeting, there was some discussion at one of the meetings of what is actually the downtown, you know, and some people said like from the light at Oaks to maybe the light at Colthaw. You know, the downtown Main Street and the surrounding area, a little bit of Washington, but, you know, or it could be even more narrow than that, so. Anyway, that's the first one. Next, please. Might as well stay there. It's not going to take long to go through, unless you want some extra stuff.
Try it again, Sam.
Oh, no, sorry.
There you go. No, one more, no, go back one.
Back one.
Back one, okay.
No, no, you went ahead. No, go back two.
Go back two?
Yeah.
You're fired.
Yep, now you're all the way.
You're going the wrong way.
On left!
You could just click on that way. That's good. Quality of Life is next. No, we just did revitalization, go to Quality of Life. There you go. Okay. There you go. Next. It doesn't matter. You can just leave it on, you can leave it on that way. Yeah, that's, all right, so just leave it like that, that's fine. So for Quality of Life, that's all encompassing. What affects you every day in your life in Milltown? So this has a whole bunch of things that we drilled down into, you know, what's going to happen with Ford Avenue, some zoning density, speeding was a big one, a lot of suggestions about that. I mean, within this, this is just the bullets of the highlights. There were actually some notes about what people suggested that we can dive into further. Communication with the borough was one. Thank you, whoever did that.
You're welcome. I did it with my mouth. Who's the Reverend?
There you go. Right. Okay, so that's Quality of Life. That's number two. Number three? You can go to slide, go to slide five. Just click on slide five, yep. All right, and scroll over a little bit. Infrastructure, which you can see, I mean, obviously, infrastructure affects quality of life and vice versa, but this is all of the infrastructure issues that were addressed, and it runs the gamut from your utility, what to do about the sewer line, the water lines, whether to have a subcommittee. I mean, so those were actually, you know, suggestions on how to manage that, you know, long-term, do we want to have power lines underground, shared services, paving program. So, you know, what comes up a lot in a lot of these is the streetlights, so that came up in downtown revitalization, quality of life, and this. Next. Thank you, Russ. No, yeah, we just did that one, yep. We can just go back to the overall. There you go. So sustainability, which we had a really good conversation about that, and I know that I have a lot of people that are really eager to get working on this, and it's sort of on me that I was busy and didn't get a meeting, but really, it should come out of this. But, you know, we will put it out for people to get involved in whatever their expertise, their passion is, but, you know, you can see in sustainability and as Dorian mentioned with the Green Team, there's a lot of potential here. All about the pervious surfaces, trees, planting, community gardens, composting. We're really lucky to have some people that have reached out to me that are experts in this and are, have a lot more expertise than I do, so we will definitely leverage that. I don't have a date for the next meeting. I know we're getting into the holiday time, so we will definitely start to come up with a better schedule for this and have a regular set schedule, and then once you pick if you really want to work on something, we'll move forward with that. But in the meantime, that's it, Russ. The last slide is just questions, so if anyone has a question, I'd be happy to answer or just look for more information. We'll post this on the website as well, and any other information, you can contact me, and then we'll let you know who's going to be running the strategic planning come the new year. Okay?
Any questions?
Any questions from the council? Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you. Okay, next, we will have the miscellaneous engineering items. Mr. McQuillan, CME Associates.
Yes, Mr. Mayor, thank you. Just a quick update. We have some work being done in the water storage tank. You may remember that over the years, we've had some issues with freezing, and in conjunction with this project, we're installing insulation on the inside of the tank bell section, which is the cone section. It's called the bells, which is a strange name for it, but essentially the cone section, and the heating has been in there already, but the heat should be held in and hopefully keep some of the valves in the area, a little less problem during the winter time. During the deep freeze, they have had issues with regard to some freezing issues with the valve, so that's proceeding along fine, and that we have nothing else to report unless there's some questions.
I have a question.
Sure.
How are they making out with finishing the paint job on the, on the water tower and fixing the?
The, as you know, the mayor council referred it to the insurance company, and the insurance company is looking at various things. The latest I heard, they were attempting to get another price quote from another contractor to compare the one that we obtained from the contractors that's basically working for the borough on the tank. That's where it is.
Very good.
Mike, the freezing issue and the heater, heater, is it?
Yeah.
Is this new to the tank or there's always been one in there?
There has been a heating system in there before, but was not, was the insulation on the inside of the bell section. That's what's added. Should make things better.
Thank you.
Any other questions for the engineer? Seeing none. Audience comments. Please state your name and address for the record. Seeing none. Close audience comments. I'll accept the motion for adjournment.
Second?
A motion by Council President Dixon, seconded by Councilwoman Kerber. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Okay, we're going to take about a three-minute recess.
Well, thank you, Brad.
We have not been involved in that. Typically, that's a building issue. You have an architect and generally I thought that was worked out with the architect and the person actually from the borough managing the project.
So no one actually asked for your advice or anything on this?
No, it wouldn't be. Normally, it's a building issue. These are a filtering system for the building only, so it would be something that wouldn't come our way. It would be an architectural thing.
It is $52,000. That's why I ask.
I understand.
Okay. Thank you.
That was already part of the finance already paid for. Thank you. Anyone else? Seeing none. I'll close audience comments. Next on the agenda is bills and claims. Will a clerk please read Resolution 19-278 by title?
Authorizing payment of bills, claims, and statements against the Borough of Milltown in a total amount of $2,695,234.10.
Okay, you've heard the reading of this resolution. What is your pleasure?
Move that this resolution be adopted.
Second.
I have a motion by Councilman Revolinsky, seconded by Council President Dixon, that the resolution is adopted. Is there any discussion? Will the clerk please call the roll?
Council President Dixon?
Aye.
Councilman Farkas?
Aye.
Councilwoman Curver?
Aye.
Councilman Legati?
Aye.
Councilwoman Mayor?
Aye.
Councilman Revolinsky?
Aye.
Mr. Mayor, we have six ayes.
So moved. Okay, next we have the reports of standing committees and introduction of resolutions. A consent resolution has been prepared to cover the six resolutions listed on this evening's agenda. If any member of the council wants any of the resolutions acted upon individually, please state the name of the number of the resolution and it will be removed from the consent resolution. Seeing none, I'll ask the clerk to please read the consent resolution.
Whereas pursuant to the rules of council, the council may establish a consent agenda for any regular or special meeting, and whereas the Borough Clerk has posted a consent agenda for this meeting, now therefore be it resolved by the mayor and Borough Council of the Borough of Milltown County and Middlesex State of New Jersey that the consent agenda previously prepared by the Borough Clerk be approved without the necessity of having the individual resolutions read by the Borough Clerk.
Okay, you've heard the reading of this resolution. What is your pleasure?
Move that this resolution be adopted.
I second.
I have a motion by Councilman Revolinsky, seconded by Councilwoman Curver, that the resolution is adopted. Is there any discussion? Will the clerk please call the roll?
Council President Dixon?
Aye.
Councilman Farkas?
Aye.
Councilwoman Curver?
Aye.
Councilman Legati?
Aye.
Councilwoman Mayor?
Aye.
Councilman Revolinsky?
Aye.
Mr. Mayor, we have six ayes.
So moved. Okay, next we move to the report of the Department of Finance Administration and Planning, chaired by Council President Ronald Dixon.
Thank you, Mayor. The only item I have for discussion this evening is the outstanding debt that is due to the borough. Currently, we have $154,972.77 due to the borough for water and sewer. We have an outstanding balance of $165,729.72 for electric. That means the borough is waiting for $320,707.49 on outstanding debt. I'm quite sure at some point in time, we will be collecting this, but right now, it's not in the borough's coffers.
Can I ask a question?
Thank you.
Sure. You've been reading that report?
Right.
On and off for about the last year. So how much has been collected? I mean, we always hear about how much is owed, but how much has been collected?
Oh, I don't, I couldn't tell you monthly. I get a sheet from the borough itself that tells me what is outstanding and not being paid. I mean, I guess totally, it could be, well, we have 7,000 voters in town, how many homes are there? There's quite a bit probably that comes in, but that's still, it's $300,000. That's outstanding, that it's way past due. Some of them earn thousands of dollars, some of them earn $1.72, $62.00 something.
Okay, but we don't, nobody's tracking how much is coming in out of that?
Oh, no, I'm not quite sure. The borough employees know how much is coming in. They have records on that. I don't get a sheet on that. I get what is owed.
I think, I think what should be made clear is that this is revolving, so if someone doesn't pay their utility bill, the dollars they didn't pay go onto this list. For all the people that pay their bills on time, Ron's not reporting that this much money came in this month because people paid their bills.
And what a lot of the people don't understand is it's 18 percent interest for everything that they do, that they owe, so it increases their bill.
Thank you.
Next, we'll hear from the Department of Public Safety, chaired by Councilman Nicholas Legati.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Milltown Police Department, monthly report dated November 17th, 2019. Between October 1st, 2019, and November 17th, 2019, police have received and answered 2,086 calls for service. Police conducted a total of 553 motor vehicle stops, which include cell phone and crosswalk details. 119 radar details were conducted in various locations during this period. Police responded to 22 motor vehicle accidents and made 34 arrests, which include shoplifting, drugs, burglary, and warrant arrests. Police have identified and an arrest is pending of a subject who had burglarized several vehicles in Milltown and surrounding towns. Milltown Police continue working with Public Works to install new safety, new traffic safety signs in various locations. Our public safety meeting on October 30th, we were able to work with East Brunswick Police and Public Works to have a reduced speed sign installed on Dutch Road in an attempt to slow down vehicles as they enter Cuthaw Avenue. We are currently accepting applications for part-time dispatchers and crossing guards. Police encourage residents to remain vigilant and report serious activities, traffic concerns to 732-828-1100 or at milltownnj.org. Chief Cannelli and members of the police department would like to congratulate our chief senior dispatch, Judy Shuck, on her upcoming retirement. Judy has served Milltown for 28 years. Judy will continue to serve, will continue her, conclude her service at 3:00 PM on Thanksgiving Day. Thank you, Judy, for your service and best of luck in your retirement. Chief Brian Cannelli.
I do have, I don't have an official report from the fire department, but I'd like to read something that I got from the, from Chief Knoll today. Saturday night, I guess it was Sunday morning, I got a call from the dispatcher that there was a structural fire in Milltown. I went out to the site and observed our, you know, fire department all in, trying to make sure that everything was taken care of. Not only was our fire department there, but our police department was on site taking care of the residents. Our rescue squad was on site, making sure everything was okay. And I'm just, I asked the fire chief to give me just a little update so that I can update people in Milltown, because a structural fire doesn't happen too often in Milltown and it's a big deal, and I'd like you to understand how our fire department reacted to this particular incident. The fire department was dispatched at 12:37 Saturday night, Sunday morning, for a report of burning on the outside of a home on Clay Street. Upon the first chief's arrival, he quickly determined that the fire was actually in the basement of the home and radioed to headquarters to upgrade the alarm assignment to a second alarm, bringing in out-of-town mutual aid companies. Milltown Police Department units were already on scene evacuating the residents from the structure. Milltown fire units arrived moments later and quickly stretched and handled the basement to extinguish the fire. Damage was limited to a section of the basement ceiling and minor smoke damage. A cat was found during the stretch, the search, and the home was, and was, from the home was safely removed. Fire units remained on scene until approximately 4:00 AM. An investigation was conducted by the Middlesex County Fire Marshal's office as standard procedure. On site was also PSENG, Milltown Utilities, and myself. In speaking with the, with two of the fire chiefs that were there, not only did they do this textbookly and handle everything perfectly, as far as I'm concerned, they looked for where they can improve, and that was very impressive to me, that they were looking for where they can improve. In my eyes, there was nowhere where they could improve, but to them, they know it a lot better than I do, and they're, they're going to take that knowledge and they're going to bring it forward, and I'd just like to thank our fire department, our police department, and our rescue squad for what they did on Saturday night. And that concludes, oh, I'm not sure, I also got this, and I'll put it in my report if you don't mind. During a conversation with the fire chief, there's been some social media about the sirens for the alarm, and it's not, nothing negative or anything, but just so, you know, and it was something I learned as well. And just so everybody knows, from 7:00 AM to 8:00 PM, the siren will sound for every type of call that the fire department is dispatched to. After 8:00 PM, the siren is only sounded for smoke conditions and to confirm fires. At 7:00 PM, that is the siren's daily test. You know, I didn't know all of that, but I just wanted to relay that in case anybody else didn't know that, you know, and you can come up and talk to me anytime you want to get verification on that. But that concludes my report.
Thank you. Next, we'll hear from the Department of Utilities, chaired by Councilwoman Trina Mayor.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I don't have a report from the utility department, so I will just give a quick synopsis of our utilities committee meeting, which was last week. So the utilities committee is myself, Councilman Revolinsky, and Councilman Farkas. We met with the CME, Mr. McClellan was there, and our BA to discuss the first steps to address our force main. As you'll recall, I read a letter that the county was willing to collaborate with us on design costs, so we wanted to start that discussion, and we will proceed forward with a resolution authorizing the, to start the design and what the professionals would need to do, just to see where we need to go. We also discussed maybe having a subcommittee to deal with that in a similar fashion to what we did when we did the electric substation, so stay tuned for more on that, but at least we began the kickoff meeting and we will have more to come very shortly. And that concludes my report, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you. Next, we will hear from the Department of Public Works and Recycling, chaired by Councilwoman Dorian Curver.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Along with regularly scheduled curbside collections, Department of Public Works has the following report. Milltown hosted the annual paper shred event on October 12th, 2019. 19,480 pounds of paper were collected at this event. It was attended by 523 Middlesex County residents and was a huge success. Public Works hosted a town clean, New Jersey Clean Communities cleanup on Saturday, October 26th. It was attended by 15 volunteers and they cleaned up throughout the town, and we had a great success with that and offered them lunch. Sign repair has taken place. This will be ongoing. Albert Avenue and Bull Pool, Borough Pool bathrooms have been winterized for the season. Albert Avenue Soccer Field has been aerated and seeded, as well as Borough Park and the Major League Field. The Pool Snack Shack floor has been painted. Borough Pool picnic tables have been sanded and painted. More will be done in the upcoming weeks. Leaf cleanup has begun at various Borough Parks, also properties in town, and this will continue until completed. Blinds have been installed in various Borough's offices. All catch basins on the south side of town have been cleaned of debris, and all couch basin lids have been cleaned off as per stormwater regulations. This will be maintained throughout the leaf season. Street sweeping has taken place and will be ongoing as manpower permits. Leaf bags are still available at Public Works Garage Monday through Friday, 7:00 AM to 3:00 PM. On Saturdays, you need to go to the senior center, and it's behind the senior center, and that's from 8:00 to noon. Reminder, plastic bags and pizza boxes, the dirty ones, are not to be in your curbside recycling. As of December, your recycling will remain at the curb if these are in the containers. You really need to get on board. It's just the way it's going to be, and it's a countywide initiative, actually statewide initiative. It's not just us. More and more people have done outreach earlier in the year. This, we started later, but that's just the guidance from the county, so, but make sure you do not have any plastic bags at all in your containers, no dirty pizza boxes. Your recycling will remain starting December, I think it's 5th, that Thursday, I think it's December 5th. So I just want you to be aware. We will have, they're supposed to be having a newsletter go out in the mail to let everyone know. We'll put that on the website as well, if it's not there already, and it's, the presence of these items in your recyclables results in your cans being left at the curb. Just keep that in mind. Please check Channel 15, milltownnewjersey.org for Public Works updates. Please check out Recycle Coach on the website page for a complete calendar of collections. That concludes my report.
Thank you. Next, we will hear from the Department of Environmental Health and Social Services, chaired by Councilman Randy Farkas.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. No report tonight?
Thank you. Next, we will hear from the Department of Recreation, chaired by Councilman Richard Revolinsky.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. SAC reminders, SAC parents, in light of the upcoming school half-days in November and December, please note that the SAC program will still operate until 6:00 PM. Please remember to pack your child's lunch for these days. SAC will be providing a pizza lunch on the following days, Wednesday, November 27th, and Friday, December 20th. If your child will not be participating, please remember to pack their lunch. Please also be advised that if your child goes to SAC per diem or on a specific three-day program, and you want to change your child's day to fit the half-day schedule, you must contact the SAC office prior to sending them. Please do not assume that the SAC site will accept them. We are full at the Parkview SAC site and will not be able to accept children on certain days. Therefore, it is imperative that you contact the SAC office prior to changing your child's schedule. If the days that are your child or children currently attend happen to fall on a half-day, there is no reason to contact us. Recreation. Youth basketball registration is now online. A courtesy email has been sent out to past users with the link for online registration via Community Pass. When registering for any REC or SAC program, please enter your address as it appears on your utility bill, or the system will not recognize it as a Milltown resident. The Milltown Christmas holiday tree lighting will be held on Friday, December 6th, beginning at 6:00 PM here in Borough Hall. Santa is supposed to arrive around 7 o'clock via fire truck. He will hand out treats for the children, courtesy of the Milltown Fire Department members, music, courtesy of Joyce Pilmer School Band, and free face painting and light refreshments will be served. Please note that the recreation programs are subject to cancellation at any time by the Board of Education as school functions take precedence. We will try our best to reschedule as soon as possible. Thank you for your cooperation. We want to thank all our volunteer coaches for a great fall soccer season. We also want to thank our coaches that stepped up to coach for their first time ever fall T-ball. We had a great show of support for both sports and look forward to a great 2020 season. Please note, with the recent launch of Community Pass, the online registration system for the recreation and SAC programs, unfortunately, we are unable to run the normal holiday trips this year. Please look for spring trips on the Milltown website after February 1st. We will be fully up and running by that time. And the recreation subcommittee meeting will be, is actually canceled for this week, November 20th, due to the League of Municipalities, and it will convene again on December 18th. Thank you, Mr. Mayor. That concludes my report.
Thank you. Now we have a brief mayoral statement. This statement is in regards to volunteer appointments, so please, anyone at home who's interested in helping out downtown, please pay attention. Volunteer appointments to the boards, committees, agencies will be made at the January reorganization meeting of the borough. Appointments can only be made to volunteers who have completed the citizen leadership application and submitted the same to the Borough Clerk's office. If you are interested in serving the community on one of the borough's boards, committees, or agencies, please complete the citizen leadership application. Applications can be found on the borough website and are also available at the Borough Clerk's office. The clerk has also brought some to tonight's meeting, so if you'd like to grab one before you leave, please see her before you go. In order to be appointed at the annual reorganization meeting, a citizen leadership application must be submitted by December 13th, and what this all means, ladies and gentlemen, is if you're going to be appointed to any boards, want to be on any committees or anything that's, you know, of the borough, you have to fill out a form, so they have you, that's basically your application. So please see the clerk or go online, get the application, and get it down to Town Hall. Thank you. Next on the agenda is introductions of ordinances, and tonight we have one. Will the clerk please read ordinance number 019-1484 by title only, please?
Amending Chapter 34, comprehensive development of the code of the Borough of Milltown to create affordable housing overlay zones.
Okay, you've heard the reading of this ordinance. What is your pleasure?
Move that the ordinance be adopted on first reading, published according to law, and at a public hearing be held at the next regularly scheduled council meeting on Monday, December 9?
Yes.
At 7:00, at 7:00 PM in council chambers in Borough Hall.
I second.
Okay, I have a motion by Councilman Legati, seconded by Councilwoman Mayor, that the ordinance be adopted on first reading, published according to law, and at a public hearing be held at our next regularly scheduled meeting on December 9th, 2019, 7:00 PM at Borough Hall. Is there any discussion?
Yes, Mr. Mayor. Just for the general public's knowledge, these overlay zones are something that the state basically deems that we have to do as a result of not being able to accommodate all the required affordable housing on Ford Avenue, so therefore, they've designated certain areas that should development be occurring in these areas. The developer has the right to put in affordable housing, and we basically can't fight them. So, take a look at the map. When you get a chance, come on down and be, it'd be good to see where these areas are.
Will the clerk please call the roll?
Council President Dixon?
Aye.
Councilman Farkas?
Aye.
Councilwoman Curver?
Aye.
Councilman Legati?
Aye.
Councilwoman Mayor?
Aye.
Councilman Revolinsky?
Aye.
Mayor, we have six ayes.
So moved. Is there any old business to come before the council this evening?
Yes, Mr. Mayor, I've got a question, and this goes back out to council several, or council several months ago. I introduced a rate equalization plan to move to monthly billing for water and sewer system. It seemed to garnish a decent amount of public support, at least from what I saw online, and council had requested additional information. Our business administrator had done due diligence and submitted a request to Edmonds, which is our billing program, to get that additional information on how any sort of monthly billing would impact the rate structure or anticipated revenue. The cost for Edmonds to do that is about $2,400. We requested a resolution at that time. Council said they wanted more information in order to move forward with this proposal. So now that we've got a $2,400 potential expenditure in front of us, I'll ask again, does the council have the desire to move forward with a monthly billing program for water and sewer? Are you interested in spending the $2,400 to get the information that you want or that you feel you need in order to evaluate that? Anyone can answer?
I personally am not. I'm not for this reason, that if it costs the Milltown residents one penny, that's something that a resident can do on their own, I don't think we should be burdening the residents with additional costs. If, I didn't see a great outcry for monthly billing, and if a resident wants to do monthly billing, they can do it on their own by coming in here once a month or paying their bill once a month and just breaking it down themselves, and it doesn't cost the borough a dime, and it won't cost the residents a dime. If there was a huge outcry, yeah, Councilman Revolinsky, I might be on board with you, but I didn't get the outcry that people want that done, so I would say no to doing it.
I would take that as a no.
So Councilman Legati is the only one with opinion around here? Is that, is that the way I'm seeing this?
Well, I would think that the lack of yeses would be no.
Okay. Just an inability to answer for ourselves.
Okay.
I see.
Any other old business? Seeing none, any new business? Seeing none, audience comments. Please state your name and address for identification of the record. The hairy man in the back.
Yeah. Thank you. Russell Einbinder, 220B South Main Street. Yes, I need more practice with newer computers. I use old computers all the time, sorry.
Appreciate your help.
Hey, always glad to help. That's why we're here. That's why we're all here. And the reason I'm here right now tonight has nothing to do with the TV station, has nothing to do with the Fourth of July, nothing to do with Chamber of Commerce. Believe it or not, I'm involved with a couple of million other things too, and one of them, it's called the East Brunswick Charro Foundation. It's actually a regional foundation established in the late 90s that we give away lots of money every year to kids in Milltown, Spotswood, East Brunswick, and South River-related schools. We have also given away community service awards to different community leaders. Council President Dixon was a recipient of one. Other people, John Cal, Paulette, and other people, like, you know, lots of people in town. Councilwoman Curver, Councilman Farkas have been to some of our big banquets as well, and you know, we do some pretty good things. In fact, quite frankly, as, other maybe scouting is like, I think maybe the most genuinely helpful thing I do. We help the future. So what I'm trying to do is we raise money every year at different events, and the reason I'm doing all this talking is because I want you to do some singing. This Saturday night, we will be hosting here at the Legion, that the Legion has graciously let us use their facility, and the East Brunswick Chamber is also helping us out, so the Milltown Chamber will be there some too, but the foundation is going to be raising some money that night with people's proceeds, and it goes directly to students, and also every year, we give donations to the rescue squads in all those towns I mentioned, fire departments in all those towns I mentioned, and different food banks. And there's also a couple of different scholarship funds that are supported by that. So obviously, if you want to help out directly, and I can obviously promise you that there's no administrative cost nonsense, it goes directly to the kids and our future. Come this Saturday night, give us your 25 bucks, have a drink or two, come sing, or watch your friends sing, or don't sing, just laugh, do whatever you want to do, but come have a good time, and we'll be doing some more events like that around here in the near future. I hope, if you want tickets, you can see me, or you can go to Mike Country Market, or Milltown Convenience, or Bagel Express, or American Legion itself, they have tickets there as well. Okay? Thank you very much.
Thank you. Anyone else?
Good evening, Alden Garber, Environmental Commission. I noticed something changed in Washington Avenue in the last week, and I just want to compliment the people who've made the decision to remark the roadway near where the new Public Works facility is. It seems to me that's a considerable improvement in safety in having one lane going up, a nice clearly marked center lane, and then dividing into two lanes coming down. That, it's a pity this wasn't done several years ago when the road was widened, but I'm sure this will improve safety and discouraging people from speeding, which we know they do a lot of going down the street, so thank you very much for making that happen, and hopefully, there's some other areas in town we can find similar improvements that can be made.
Thank you, Alan. Anyone else? Okay, seeing none, close audience comments, council comments?
Yes, Mr. Mayor. I wanted to bring up, I saw some sad news online today, a passing of a lifelong Milltown resident, someone who worked for the borough for 44 years, Mr. Donald Petrie passed away, and so I just wanted to say that I've had the privilege over my two years on council to get several calls from Mr. Petrie with advice, and you know, we had some nice chats. He, you may remember him, he worked as, you know, through various capacities in the borough. He was also a crossing guard, he was our dog and swan warden, and also as Uncle Sam for many years at the start of the Fourth of July parade, so I just wanted to make note of that and, you know, thank him for all the advice he gave to me over the last two years and give my sincere condolences to his family. He will be missed.
Thank you. Anyone else? Seeing none, close council comments, mayor's comment, one quick comment. Volunteer appointments, if you'd like to be a member, if you'd like to help out in your community, please come down, fill out the application, and do what it is you like to do. That concludes that. I'll accept a motion for adjournment.
So be it.
Second.
Motion by Council President Dixon, seconded by Councilwoman Curver. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Good night.